The meeting of the Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, this comes down.
The Ivana City Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Alex? Mr. Alex?
Here. He's talking to you.
I'm sorry, could you?
I'm calling a roll, just say here.
Here. You're speaking very softly.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Pat?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Present.
Mr. Whalen?
Here.
Ms. Wyman?
Present.
Mayor Satherthwaite?
Here.
Anyone out in the audience that would like to speak before the council, pick up a card in the back, and you will be allowed to speak for no more than five minutes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Your staff report?
Have John do an ED update for last month.
Thank you. Last month was a very busy month with the Economic Development Division as well as for the council. We were busy working with the TIF II Extension Plan Amendment, which was made available to the council and for public review. And a date was for a hearing on the TIF II Plan Amendment was also set, as well as preparing the annual reports for the Illinois Department of Revenue and holding the annual GRB meeting. The council approved a special use permit for all these grocery and also approved a redevelopment and parking agreement for the Lincoln Square Village project. Staff prepared development agreement for the county plaza redevelopment, which the council approved last week. And we also prepared the agreement for the Gill redevelopment site with Bear Properties, which you have before you tonight. We've been busy on Philo Road as always. Published the Philo Road Business Directory, which you have in front of you. And we're compiling all the other reports into one final report for publication on the Philo Road Business District's revitalization, as well as working with some business people and developers on trying to put projects on some sites out there. We also have been working with a variety of businesses and developers on their expansion plans, as well as new development plans or new projects. And we all, as always, we continue to be active with UBA and the EDC and the CVB, and especially Kathy Larson's work with the Marketing Committee on the banner redesign and development program, as well as the membership brochure. And we actually processed two TIF redevelopment incentive loans for downtown with the American Legion, and also one with Michelle's Bridle, which is not in downtown but out on Anthony Road, which actually had ribbon cutting today. Very nice facility. Questions?
No, thank you very much. I'll get the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
The movement seconded, the previous meeting to approve. Any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing none, pass. Do you have any public input? Wyman?
I just wanted to add a comment. I left a message for Mr. Holtz, I think, on Tuesday regarding this, or Wednesday, and it's just to follow up on what Mr. Roberts had brought up during comments, council member comments last week regarding the county brick facade that's on the corner of Elm and Vine Street. Apparently at the county board facilities committee last week, the county attorney and another attorney who is a county board member claimed that any liability that would result from accidents or crashes or injuries as a result of the impairment, the visual impairment created at that site would be the liability of the city. And what I'm not clear on is because the people, the two attorneys there who made this claim, saying that the city would be liable, didn't give any statutory or case law reference, I don't know how the city would be liable, but I'm concerned about the fact that they said this at a public meeting, that it certainly wasn't contradicted, and what the city can and will do, I guess through Mr. Holtz, to correct this idea, and then also to make sure that not only is the city not liable, but there aren't any further injuries, and if we need to require the county to change that, or to take action ourselves on this, on this brick structure, to make sure, again, there aren't any injuries. Are you aware of the comments that have been made? And I don't know if the message got?
I'm not aware of the comments, and I didn't get your message, but I'll be happy to look into it.
Okay. If you could?
Who was it that made the comment?
It was Mr. Fletcher and County Board Member Steve Beckett, as I understand it. And the meetings, I guess now under state statute, are all recorded and have to be preserved, so I presume they could give you a copy of that. But if you could open copy, council members, on any communications regarding that, I'd appreciate it. One other comment is, just as we're in the new year, I know there's at least one new law that affects council members with regard to the Open Meetings Act, and Mr. Holtz, if at sometime in the near future, you could let council members know if there are, what we need to know for that law and any other laws that are now on the books and pertain to us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other council members have any input?
Well, I'd just like to thank Councilman Wyman for bringing that up again, because it hadn't really resolved itself, I thought, very completely at the last meeting. Really citing the fact that the attention had been paid to sightlines or some triangulation effect. And the fact is that when you do pull up to that stop sign, there is a visual impediment, and it may take some physical adjustment to the sign to correct the issue, and I'd be interested to know, you know, what further insight people and the staff will have on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we go down to item number five. Resolution number 2005-01-001R. Resolution adopting the National Incident Management System. Fire Department.
Good evening. First, for clarification, this resolution really represents the entire city operation, which is in my position as fire chief and work with the city manager, or excuse me, city administrator, it falls under our umbrella for bringing this presentation to you. You'll notice in my memorandum that I do address the police chief and the public works director, but it eventually will impact the entire city operation if you approve this adoption. The National Incident Management System comes from Presidential Directive, Homeland Security Presidential Directive Number Five. All this really did start on September 11, 2001. It was during that day that a number of things occurred, as we know, and out of all the review of that incident, it was clarified across this country that we're not working as well as we could within emergency services. Everyone works well by themselves, but out of that incident came the issues of interoperability, communication standards, and just scene management. And so what you have before you is the proposal to adopt the National Incident Management System. It is step one of a four or five-phase program that is essential, again, with your lead and direction from the council directing us to do so, that we start immediately in going through all the phases of training, coordinating training across all departments of the city, of the key personnel, in understanding the National Incident Management System, and what's called the Incident Management System and Unified Command. After that, we are, we already are in the process, in fact, met last Thursday morning, to start reviewing our own disaster plans and improving the standard we work with and making sure that they're unified across our city and are interoperable with the county and our other agencies we work with. Third and final, excuse me, fourth phase is to move in into putting into exercise form and test it. And the last phase is to annually evaluate it and make any updates. While it's, I could provide you four or five inches of material on this, that is as close as I can to give it to you in a nutshell, and ask for your support in giving us direction to start officially on this program. I'd entertain any questions.
Ms. Beckett?
Thank you. In your memo, you said most of the cost will be borne by state and federal government, but there is some cost for Ivana Ballpark. How much are we talking about?
It's difficult, because I think you'll know on me in the memorandum, that it's our intention to do this within our current operational budget, as to say, we're using our current staff to do the annual refresher courses and so forth. A vast majority of the training now required is available online, so we can avoid traditional class time and loss of staff. And so it's, I appreciate the question and don't want to avoid it, but it's, at this very moment, we are seeing zero cost, and we're waiting to see how this thing all works out when you go over the next, you know, 12 to 24 months. Literally as we move along each month, there's a new deadline within the federal government program here through the Department of Homeland Security, and they'll reach the deadline, and then after the deadline, they'll bring out the new standards. And so we're waiting, literally on an ongoing basis, of what's the next set of rules we're going to be working under.
Thank you. I guess I was?
I have a question.
Alex?
Since, as you said, it would probably require reading inches of material to get really to grasp what's involved in the implementation of this, I guess I'll ask you to pretend that we've implemented this, and it's been a couple of years, looking back. Is this something where you feel that there will be significant differences in the way the departments conduct their day-to-day operations as a result of implementing the system? Or is this more a case of being able to, you know, use standardized terminology or be able to communicate better with other departments? Do you see this as something that's going to be, that's going to significantly affect the way the fire department, the police department, and other departments of the city work on a day-to-day basis? Or is this something that's really more preparing for contingencies in the event that there is some type of a national incident?
Well, first, within the agencies, within the Twin Cities and Champaign County, we really do work very much in this format today, and have for quite some time. And so we're fortunate, in fact, the state of Illinois as a whole was a key player in sending out representatives to assist the federal government in writing this plan. And so working from local and to the state level, this really fits into how this whole state as well as locals work. Bringing it home a little closer, it does broaden some of our working skills in that one of the major changes since September 11th was the awakening and the awareness that the public works is truly a key player in first response in public safety work. And then if, as this thing really becomes fully implemented in the city, it will broaden out into other departments. Our personnel director manages the volunteers for a disaster. And so coordinating these and other departments, there will be key players in personnel in almost all our departments, so we'll have some contact with this. And where, probably the biggest thing is time spent on some of this online training to get up to speed, to make them more acquainted with the stuff that the police and the fire have been routinely working with. So it does a little bit of both, documenting what we do and bringing a few more people on board.
Let me just follow up, and even though this is a directive from the Homeland Security, this really is applicable to a variety of different disasters that might hit us. And, you know, most notably for us, you know, we had a tornado in 1996, ice storm in 1990. We are going to get some kind of natural disasters. We don't know if we'll ever get a terrorist event here, but the process is the same, the way we react is very much the same as far as the operation is concerned, no matter what kind of a disaster it is. And so it really, as far as day-to-day operations, it doesn't affect the day-to-day, because we don't deal with disasters on a day-to-day basis. But the training, and then when the disasters do hit, this gives us a model for how to react to that, particularly if there are multiple agencies. It's a widespread event where we have to coordinate with the county and the U of I and Champaign and so forth. It dictates a lot of that coordination and communication between jurisdictions.
You still have a question?
Well, I might have been partly answered. I was kind of wondering whether exactly what was being implemented, it's, I understand it's going to be like perhaps setting up a chain of interaction and communication, but what I was wondering was, does that mean there are going to be, like specifically new telephone communication materials purchased or something installed? Or you talked about online training, is that another part of the aspect of the finances?
Well, if I could, I think I can give it to you in about 30 seconds, the backbone of the NIMS program. Phase one is what we're doing here this evening, and discussing the consideration of adopting the program in itself. Phase two is what's called the initial staff training, and right now there's only one class asked and is directed under the program, and that's to take the awareness course of the NIMS program itself. It is clear it will involve at least two to three other programs, our classes following it, which is the Incident Command System and Unified Command. Then it becomes identification of relevant plans, procedures, and policies. It's a review that we already have ongoing within the city, and as I stated last Thursday morning, we had a critical meeting with three or four of the main departments doing that part. Then we have the modification of those plans to meet and again confer with all the other agencies, to unify, as the mayor stated, our job is to make sure that when we all get together, that we're thinking the same way, using the same terminology, which again, fortunately for here, has been in place for quite some time. And then finally, the exercise. Cost factor, as of right now, until things start to dry up, which we're all expecting to happen, these costs are being handled by the state through and passed through AIMA, and they're managing the classes with the Fire Service Institute, and our tuition has been free. The online courses have been free, and as long as we have access for our city personnel, which we should not have any problem between the different sites we have within each department, as well as we have one or two different places where we can put some people aside and give them a chance of a private place to go through the class. The materials for new systems are not required. What they're really doing is standardizing the interoperability of radio systems and phone system at a major emergency center. And so?
So existing communication materials?
Yes, and where some of the interoperability comes is providing, like our local, as the director, what's called a little black box, that in the Champaign County Emergency Command Center, the mobile center, there'll be a system placed in there, already approved, and will be funded by the state through the federal government, that will interconnect cell phones to radios to the whole system to become interoperable again, because that's the biggest problem we have at a major disasters. Every system is overloaded, and no one can get hold of someone else. So, right now, we do not foresee any significant budgetary demands to implement this program. It's more staff time, we're dotting the i's in our current programs, refining them, and moving forward on the training.
Okay.
Any more questions? I have one. You already mentioned part of it. You mentioned ESDA, and I was just wondering whether ESDA and MEC was going to be part of the overall system?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Now, should we have an emergency? Who's the commander in charge?
It all depends on the type of emergency, sir. If it were a law enforcement-based emergency, your local police chief. If it's in the county, obviously the county sheriff. If, the way this viewed today is that we work under what's called the Unified Command System. We should be working, obviously if one of us is showing up, we're running the scene, but as once as all the other players show up in this situation, if I were in the command center, I'd be looking for Chief Adair, Bill Gray, Bruce Walden to be showing up. We would get all the players together. If it's an emergency based around a fire incident, I'd be considered the lead commander, but I would confer to make sure that any decisions we made did not create a negative ramification off in other departments' actions. That's the key of the whole thing, is that we're talking before we make a unilateral decision. Most incidents will translate, excuse me, transfer as time goes along. The police chief and fire chief or our commanders will be publicly in charge of most incidents up front. Eventually, it will be public works in almost all of them, because of traffic control, our ice storms, we're running around looking for downed wires. It eventually all translates to Bill Gray and his staff, to Manny's cleaning up the streets and barricading places for closure. So it all, it's transitional. It'll be us and then switched to somebody else. It all works that way now.
No more questions? Motion being ordered.
Move to send the resolution to city council with a recommendation for approval.
A second?
The move being seconded. This item be sent to?
Thank you.
Council for approval? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing none, pass. Item number six, ordinance number 2005-01-004, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreements for use of right-of-way, 701 South W. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. This is a license agreement to allow the continued use of two streetlights on Oregon and one on Nevada. They were installed as part of the mixed-use project on Gregory Place, just south of Crayton Center. These were installed in the city right-of-way, and in order for them to be installed and stay in the right-of-way, there are certain understandings and liabilities and responsibilities that need to be outlined, and that's what this agreement is about. So, be happy to answer any questions. The representatives from the development have agreed and have signed the agreement that's before you this evening, and if you so approve, we'd like to send it to city council.
I just have one question, and that's regarding the lighting. There have been complaints over the years about lighting going into people's residences, and I'm wondering if there will be shields over the lighting so that it doesn't pollute or go in and affect the lighting or the, basically so it's shielded and the lighting is only facing downward?
We would probably respond to those sorts of comments or requests or complaints. We're not aware of any at this time, and if we did receive those, we would want the owners of this lighting system to respond accordingly.
So my concern is that, and my understanding is, that the way we've got the lights and because it deals with foot candles and that sort of thing, that in other areas of town, our lighting, the lighting isn't required to be, or at least not sufficiently for some of the neighbors, to be facing just downward or to be shielded from being, from just facing downward. Is there a pattern or something that at least council members can see before this takes final approval, presumably next week, so that the people who are living on the second and third floor, or plan to live on the second or third floor, would be assured that, you know, there's going to be a shield there?
Well, the lights are already on.
Right.
They've been on for six, eight, nine months now.
But there's no shield on top of it now, right?
On top there is, on the sides there isn't. It's a, it's a ornamental type of light, okay? And really, this lighting is more decorative than it is functional, in our opinion. The real street lighting, sidewalk lighting, is the city lighting that's out there. Those are the high poles that are in Oregon and Nevada on campus now. So this is something to tie into the already streetlight system that they put in on the vacated Gregory Place, and it's more decorative in nature than it is for additional lighting within the area. But I guess, to restate, if we receive complaints, we would respond accordingly. We're not aware of any complaints to date, but this lighting system is, the type of fixture is very similar to our L-72 fixtures, like we have on, you know, West Green Street or what have you. So we've had very few complaints about that type of lighting. It's very good at directing the light to the walk and to the streets, and not so much into a bedroom window.
And it's different from the lighting that we have on, I believe it's Florida, where we did have those neighbors complaining?
No, that was for a different reason. That was a tall pole, short pole issue.
Ah, okay. That's right. All right, thank you.
No other questions, a motion will be ordered.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I have one question, which may be more appropriately directed to the city attorney, I guess. I didn't, it wasn't clear to me whether this, either of these agreements contained a provision for what would happen if the agreement expires. I was wondering if you could point me to that. It appeared to have a 20-year term, but it wasn't clear to me what would happen if the 20-year term elapsed without the agreement being renewed.
It might be in paragraph D.
Now, paragraph D, I thought, dealt with what happened if the lights were abandoned, but I didn't see a corresponding provision for what would happen if the agreement expired. And I was wondering if there was an issue as far as wanting the developer to have to bear the cost of removal in the event that the agreement expired without being renewed.
The basic structure of this is the structure that was, that was established and authorized by the city council some time back in the context of right-of-way regulation ordinance. I believe at the time, what was contemplated was that upon the expiration of the agreement, it would have to be renegotiated, or simply renewed. But for specific answer on that, I'll have to go back and look at those council minutes.
I just wanted to, it seemed to be a missing piece, and if you're satisfied that it's not, I'm satisfied with it, but otherwise, we could address that when it comes back to council.
Sure.
Thank you.
The missing pieces coming before us next week, a motion being ordered.
I move that we send an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreements for use of rights-of-way to council with a recommendation for approval, and a request that Mr. Holtz reject this to see if we need any additional provisions.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Movement seconded, that this item be forwarded to the city council for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Close.
Hearing none, pass. Item number seven, ordinance number 2005-01-005, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. U cart purchase. Mr. Gray?
We're in need to purchase additional U carts. The action requested would be via a budget amendment ordinance. Program has been, I think, a real success, a real hit with residents in the community. Our volumes have increased, as stated in the memo, and we're issuing on the order of 50, 60 such carts per month, and our supplies are dwindling, and we'd like to renew an order for $21,000 in carts. And Mr. Fletcher is here, our environmental manager. If you have any other questions, he could perhaps answer those. But I think it's been a real, real plus to the community, and I know a lot of the newer homes that are coming online now are asking for the U cart too, and that extra volume seems to be encouraging people to recycle even more than before.
Any questions? Ms. Beckett?
Thank you. I have a question about the logistics of collection. Have we got a situation right now where the series of single-family homes, some might still be putting out the green buckets, and others would have the toter? Okay. And the people who have, who have these do have to bring, they still have to bring them to the curb, right?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So how are they, how are they collected? Is it, is it the same truck comes down the street and empties buckets?
Does both.
Okay.
Yes.
And is that, do they need a different kind of truck to be able to empty the toters?
No, same vehicle. I think the vehicle has an automated dumping feature of the cart, but it is the same truck that collects, whether it's the bins or the U cart.
Could we, is our contract, does it go till 2008? Is that when we've got, will we have a four-year? It's five years. 2009.
Yeah, we just, it'll be a year old in this coming April, so it's a five-year contract.
Well, this is a ways off, and I just, I just want to make a comment that when we, you know, 10 years ago, when I wanted to add apartments to the U-cycle program, the reason that it was going to be so hard, and it took five years to do it, was because of the tremendous difference in the technology needed on a truck to empty these toters versus a bucket. And I think that was the reason that we were told that, why multifamily owner, owners of multifamily housing pay so much more than people in single-family homes. But now, now if single-family homes are going to have this exact same thing as multifamily, other than the difference between, between curbside and backdoor, I hope the city will be looking to more equalizing those costs. I've got, I live in a seven-unit building, and we have two toters, and we pay seven times as much as someone with one toter in a single-family home. And if we were a 15-unit building with three And if we were a 15-unit building with three toters, we would be paying 15 times as much as a single-family home, and clearly, there's not, well, that's clearly inequitable, and I think, I mean, I love the program, I love recycling, I'm grateful we got for apartments, but I think price-wise, that renters or landlords, whoever's paying it per property, are really being gouged in our pricing system that we have now, and if there's, if it's really no different, then the prices should be more equalized.
There were about, if I recall, three, four, or five reasons as to the price difference, and I could research those and bring that back, but what you mentioned this evening was, you know, perhaps one component, but it was not the major component, but I'd be happy to, you know, bring those back up if you want to, for the price differences.
It's a lot of work I would like to know, I would like to hear about. Like with backdoor collection, for example, the difference in curbside collection, backdoor collection of garbage, it's not seven times more to have your backdoor collection than have curbside, though it is more, and I would expect it to be more, but it's a big difference. Thank you.
Now, these were bid items, too. I mean, just so you realize that, we had two contractors. You know, this was an open, you know, publicly bid situation, so whatever economies of scale, and you recall, we had one contract to do in one and one contract to do in the other. So, I, I, well, I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Lyman?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. I appreciate Ms. Pat bringing up, recognizing and bringing to council's attention the inequity, and I, too, would like to see the reasons why we continue to have such an inequity. I think as council starts to look at preparing next year's budget, if we can look at the various components and the fact that there's such a, well, what I'm sure tenants feel is a price gouge for the recycling, if we can start to look at equalizing that based on the contracts that we've got, that the city has for, out on North Lincoln, and for the, for the U-cart and that sort of thing, so that even though the contract that we have for multifamily is different from the contract for the single-family residences for pickup of recycling, if there's a way to better equalize or bring closer the prices that households have to pay, I think that would be better and certainly more equitable and fair. Thank you.
Any other concerns? If not, a motion, oh, Mayor?
Just a comment, not a concern. I think this has really identified what was kind of a bottleneck in the process here, and we've seen our recycling levels plateau, and have been about the same way for quite a while, and it's clear that one of those reasons was because we didn't have big enough containers for a lot of families. And so, that by taking away that impediment and getting these 65-gallon U-carts, why, that has really enabled families to recycle and do it much more easily than they've been able to do it in the past. And so, this is a relatively minor adjustment to the program, well, that has, as you can see with an increase of 33%, that's really increased the level of participation. So, I think it's a great idea, and we'll support the additional purchase of these carts.
Ms. Pat?
As I was throwing also, in addition to providing more space, which encourages people to recycle more, it makes recycling so much more convenient, and people who are still using those green buckets might not realize that you, it's easier to recycle because you have these, and things don't take up space in your house. It's just like when you take out your garbage. If you have, if you have company and you have a lot of cans of bottles, you just take them out as soon as the company leaves, and you toss them in that, in that U-cart, and it's, I think that's probably, in addition to the increased capacity of the container, one of the reasons why we've seen this big jump. It's a good idea.
If no other comments, a motion would be in order.
Move to, I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. The movement seconded, that this item be sent to council with a recommendation of approval. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes. We move on to item eight, ordinance number 2005 dash 001 dash 006, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, tree trimming grant.
Okay, thank you. Our, we received a $12,000 grant from Department of Natural Resources for tree trimming. City Arborist made the application and received a notification here recently, and we'd like to officially then add this money for additional revenue in our budget so that we can do extra trimming this coming trimming season between now and May. The area that is in our trimming schedule is reflected in the report, and that's bounded by, the area bounded by Bradley, excuse me, University Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, Wright Street, and this will be done by contract, and looking for, sending it on for council consideration.
So, Bill, is this like merely like maintenance trimming? This is not anything else in particular, or it's not funded, it's not in this one neighborhood because of some kind of unique situation going on there?
We have, the Arbor crews for many years have gone through, they go through different sections of the city and do a full trim, prune of the trees, in some cases, removals, and kind of systematically go through the community, and this is the area that we're targeting next, and which will stretch our, you know, amount of work that much further than typically, we budget about $30,000 a year, so you have $30,000 in contract, and that's to supplement our two full-time, two part-time Arbor crew people that do this type of work and other related forestry work.
I see.
So, yeah, we're, there's a trim cycle that City Arborist has established, and this is, feeds in or complements that trim cycle.
Mayor?
And one thing you notice is that, you know, if we hadn't been doing that, we have an ice storm like this, we would have had a lot more damage to the city trees and a lot more quote-unquote "natural pruning," which means limbs falling on sidewalks and on cars and so forth. So, it's this kind of routine cycle of trimming that Bill's talking about that maintains a healthy urban forest, and it's something we've been doing for years, and this just accelerates the tree trimming cycle. But this is routine maintenance.
No other comments, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve this resolution and send it on to the City Council meeting.
Second.
The movement seconded, this item be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes. Item nine, ordinance number 2005 dash 01 dash 007, ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, approximately 0.138 acres, located at 407 South Dodson, Homestead Corporation.
Thank you. The staff is requesting the council to consider the attached ordinance with the memo for an annexation of approximately 1.38 acres located at 407 South Dodson Drive, and this property is currently owned by the Homestead Corporation of Champaign-Urbana, whose representative, Jim Rose, is here with us tonight. And the Homestead Corporation has already had an annexation petition signed to annex this property into the city, and the conversion would be directly from the county's zoning designation of our two single-family residents to the city's designation of our two single-family residents and properties currently leased as single-family residents. And it also, the annexation petition is consistent with the goals and objectives, the plans and objectives of the comprehensive plan, as well as the extraterritorial jurisdiction area plan. And fiscal impacts will be that it will add equalized valuation to the city, and so staff recommends approval of this annexation petition.
Just a question, since Homestead's a not-for-profit, how does it add EAV to the city? I mean, we won't actually get extra tax money, right, property taxes? Is that?
Do you make a fee for taxes on some of your property?
Oh, you do, okay. Even though you're not-for-profit and all of that? Okay, thank you.
What was the size of that parcel again?
Point 138 acres.
Okay.
Me and Ben spoke earlier.
I thought you said 1.38.
I could very well have misplaced my decimal. Pardon me.
In his house.
Any other comments? Another motion would be in order.
I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval. Second.
The movement seconded, this item be sent to council for approval. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes. Item number 10, ordinance number 2005 dash 01 dash 008, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement, 2413 and 2425 East Elm Street and 504 MacArthur Drive, Homestead Corporation of Champaign-Urbana.
Staff is again seeking approval this time for a pre-annexation agreement for when these properties of the Homestead Corporation become contiguous with other city properties and can be annexed. And once again, the conversion is direct from the county's zoning designation of our two single-family to our designation in the city of our two single-family. It also is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and the extraterritorial jurisdiction area plan as well. And so, the Homestead Corporation has signed an annexation agreement for the future annexation of these properties, and we recommend approval forwarding this, this annexation agreement to council for approval.
Any comments? Motion would be in order.
I move to send ordinance number 2005 dash 01 dash 008, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement, 2413 and 2425 East Elm Street and 504 MacArthur Drive, Homestead Corporation of Champaign-Urbana, to council with a recommendation for approval. Second.
Ms. Pat, seconded. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes. Item 11, ordinance number 2005 dash 01 dash 009, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement with Bear Properties.
Thank you. Before you, you have a memo seeking authorization of the mayor to enter into an agreement, a development agreement with Bear Properties to develop a retail and office building at 400 North Broadway Avenue. The new building would be constructed by Bear Properties, whose representative, Tom Harrington Jr., is with us tonight, and the building will be comprised of a minimum of 6,000 square feet and an investment of $600,000. You have an updated agreement with some minor edits that clarify the information and the agreement therein, and you also have some attachments that better describe the property that is to be developed. And so, we enter those in, those edits and changes in for your consideration this evening in order to, and you've had a chance to look at them, the attachments basically show the whole property to be developed on an aerial photograph with, it's outlined in orange. And then, the second pictorial attachment that you have, basically, you've seen before, but we just changed the designation from attachment A to A1. And then, we have a printed attachment, E, or it's an exhibit, actually, which is a legal description of the property that will be developed upon, and that includes the area to be vacated, the street to be vacated, as well as the property of Bear Properties that will be developed.
Questions?
Few more items here. In order to execute the project feasibly, an interest subsidy is proposed from TIFT II funds, which is consistent with their purposes. Also, we propose to vacate Courtesy Avenue, and that's a critical part of the project in that it allows the project layout to function and provide parking for the project, but also the vacation of Courtesy Road also benefits the city by placing that property back on the tax rolls, reduces maintenance and repair costs, as well as reducing the city's liability, and of course, has a visual improvement as well. And the project is also consistent with the downtown plan by improving the site in an urban style, and I have a color version of the rendering that you had in your packet, and I'll pass that around and collect it after it makes the rounds. The equalized evaluation from this project will increase by approximately $140,000 from the approximately current $60,000 to a minimum of $200,000. And the staff recommends that you forward this ordinance and agreement to council for approval.
Ms. Lyman?
I'm wondering if you could get to us before next week, or before the final vote on this at council, information about Bear Properties, is it a group or an LLC I haven't heard of before, and what sort of plans? I understand it's retail and office, office mix, but if there are certain prospects that they have, they have ideas for, or if Bear Properties LLC has had other ventures, what those have produced, and certainly, if you've already got a rendering of what sort of building it'll be, perhaps there's an idea of who potential tenants would be, or if there's already some preliminary discussions with tenants. I'd just like to know more information about it before we agree to this. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, I have a couple question. It's my understanding from reading the development agreement that retail is not required in this space, that it may be retail, it may be office. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Second, it, from my reading of the development agreement, Bear Properties has to have a development plan for the rest of the Gill property as of next January, is that correct?
Correct.
What's the, for a 6,000-square-foot building, what's the required parking spaces? Or do we not have, actually, this is in downtown, so we actually don't have required parking spaces, is that correct?
Bill, you're correct.
If, if, if this building was not in, it was in a B3 zoning, what, how many parking spaces would it require, do you know?
I'm gonna have to defer to a plan.
Tyler might know. About 24?
If it were retail.
If it were retail and if it were office, it would be less?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple of concerns looking at this. One is the, there's 47 parking spaces for, being built for either office or retail that looks like fairly small, I mean, 6,000 square feet, it's not, not a significant space. Do you understand, is some of that parking going to be rented out for other purposes other than the building itself? Because I'm a little surprised that there's that volume of parking spaces for such a small development.
That's particularly part of the proposal, I think. Some of the parking spaces that you see may actually be part of the developers' efforts outside of the development zone.
It's my understanding that the development zone, well, I guess there's some to the, to the south, but in large portions of what we are essentially giving to the developer by vacating this way are parking spaces. It's mostly parking for retail, which makes sense, right behind, or office, but then there's a fairly remote parking lot to the east, to the northeast, which I believe is all. It's my understanding that given the, frankly, the momentum of downtown, that the developer's willing to speculate on a building in downtown Urbana, which is something that we haven't seen in a long time. So in that respect, I guess it's good. It's bad in that I can't tell you what's gonna be in the building. But as far as the other questions, perhaps Tom could just address who Bear Properties is. Tom Harrington's the proposed developer.
Yeah, let me just restate the question carefully, which is that, my question is, will any of the forty-seven parking spaces that we see in this be rented out for purposes other than the retail or office space that's proposed?
No, there's no plan to do that.
Okay. And so then, an auxiliary question would just be if, what the uses of these parking spaces will be, to the extent that you understand. Will they all be supporting that property, or will they have some other use?
There's probably very little excess parking there, actually, because there's still that loading dock there. That was kind of a future conceptual plan.
Yeah. Tom, could you come up and sit down so we can record you? Thanks.
I think the parking that you're seeing is probably more of a future conceptual plan than any idea of what's there now. It's all paved right now.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a loading dock that goes up to the Gill building there, so there's not much excess parking. No plan to rent it. It's not to say that it couldn't be, but we have no plan to do that.
I had just a couple of follow-up questions, and actually, you might be able to answer some of them. If you're able to make this public information, when do the, I wasn't aware that there were current leases in the Gill sports. I thought that it was vacant. And so I wondered when the current leases expire.
Well, I think they're between seven and ten years, from as little as one to up to between seven and ten.
Seven to ten years?
Mm-hmm. But there are options beyond that, too.
Okay. So the, I guess, there's a piece that I'm not understanding, which is that the development agreement seems to state, I guess it's maybe for our staff, seems to state that a development proposal would be in place for the rest of the space by January of next year, but we're looking at leases that might tie up the property for seven to ten, or am I incorrect?
We're looking for some kind of a conceptual plan that looks out into the future to see what those properties could be after those leases have expired.
Okay. So the plan that would be submitted by January would actually be a fairly long-term plan that would be looking out ten to twenty years in terms of development?
Yes.
Okay. See it. One final question. I see that the building that's proposed is proposed at one story. Do you have any, is it being built in such a way that other stories could be built upon it, or is your plan to remain, basically build a one-story building?
One-story building.
Okay. And question to staff, it's my understanding in our strategic plan that our goal on North Broadway is really to increase density and in many ways, look at, you know, at least two-story structures. That's the conceptual pieces that we're looking at in the downtown plan. Of course, we can't always have what we want, but I, my question, I guess, is where, did staff raise concerns about this being a one-story development in an area where we were really looking for increased density? And if so, how did those concerns play out in your conversations?
I think looking at the design and the quality of the building that's being proposed fits the style that we're looking for, and looking to try and get some development, speculative development, as CEO has said, which doesn't happen very often for us, was encouraging as well. And so with this private property that's looking to be developed, we thought that this was a good arrangement for the city to get that property improved from what it is now.
Well, it's certainly an improvement.
Is there, can I ask a question? I was wondering, is there a reason why you didn't decide to do a two-story building there, or a deeper building? Because you have space that could go back, you know, the building could be larger, perhaps.
No, that's pretty much the maximum footprint that you could put on there. It's governed by the Boneyard Creek, at least right now, by the loading docks that go back to the other buildings. So that's absolutely the maximum one-story building that you could have. You know, beyond that, the two-story building, the second-story uses would obviously be apartments. And, you know, there's some other things, you know, I think on the docket right now in downtown Urbana that, you know, would say you'd wanna wait before you'd see, just because there'd be a lot coming on the market, I think, in that regard. So for that reason, we didn't think about putting a second story on it.
Well, I'd be very intrigued to see what comes up with the proposal for the rest of the property.
Yeah, I think it's...
It's a big piece of property, and it's a very strange-looking building.
It's obviously very long-term. I mean, that's just, the fact of life is, that's probably twenty years or more away before that. But we are willing to talk about what those things could be.
You've got the staying power to follow through on...
Pardon me?
You have the foresight or the willingness to do a long-term project there.
I'm never sure about my foresight, but I'm...
And we won't put you on the spot for foresight, but, okay.
Ms. Allen?
I've one, a couple of related questions, and I have some comments which I'll make later after there's been a motion. But can you give us an idea of what your plans are for the integrating the Boneyard Creek into whatever you do here? Do you, I notice in the current aerial, there's sort of a walkway, and there's some landscaping along the side of the creek there. Do you propose to keep that, or make any enhancements to that, or make any changes to that?
No, I think we just plan to come up with a landscaping plan. I think we have to apply for a permit related to development along the Boneyard, which would...
Creekway permit.
Which I would think would dictate what that is.
And a related note, is it your intention to initially or ultimately remove that disused bridge that is at the northeast corner of this parcel? Is that actually on your, would this be on the property to be developed?
I think Bill can answer that question.
If not, who is responsible, who will be responsible when someday that becomes a hazard?
The bridge will probably stay indefinitely. We looked at removing that or coming up to some other solution to stabilize the banks there, and it was much more expensive than keeping that bridge in place. It's the city responsibility. So the bridge is gonna stay in the near-term future. If there's ever some corridor work in the Boneyard that's done to change what's there, that could be looked at at that time. But right now, the structure needs to stay in place. Actually, the Boneyard takes a fairly significant bend at that location, and that's really for protecting the banks there, erosion protection, too.
If I could follow up with Mr. Gray, does that create an untenable situation? I noticed that they're in this site plan, and with the understanding that this parking may not be built exactly as shown in the site plan. But in the site plan, we show this pod of parking spaces approximately where that bridge is, but no real street access to the bridge. Currently, we have a city street, or such as it is, that leads to that bridge. And my understanding, I guess based on what you've said, is that by vacating that street and allowing this redevelopment to happen, we're gonna be in a position where there's a stranded city bridge?
Well, the street is no longer a through street. It's been closed for many years. The current parking arrangement is such that it's, there's bumper blocks or that type that keep you from driving up even to the bridge. So I think for purposes for the last several years onward is, even though it looks like a bridge and seems like a bridge, it's really more of a wall to protect the banks of the Boneyard, is really what its purpose is. Now, there could be the reopening of the barrier of that bridge. I don't know, that's up to the property owners there, but there's a barrier that prohibits public access across the bridge there. It was installed several years ago. But the bridge itself is really not for any travel-away purposes anymore.
I'm aware of that. My concern, I guess, is if we do begin to have structural problems with it, are we gonna be in a position where we can still get in there to remove it, or to take remedial action before it falls on somebody?
Yeah, well, we do inspect that annually, number one. Number two is, we do have an easement along the Boneyard for access purposes. And in fact, this year, they'll be doing some work right in this vicinity downstream of the bridge. There's some erosion problems we have in that vicinity, so there is access to answer your question.
And my concern arose from the fact that we have a site plan here that in fact pretends the bridge doesn't exist and provides no access to the bridge, and consequently would presumably seem to prevent us from getting in to do any maintenance or do any...
There's access, yeah.
Okay. And the Exhibit Eight shows cars, if I'm hearing this correctly, shows cars parked on the bridge, which...
Well, you know, if I could, I think that, you know, part of the confusion there is, that's kind of in the future development area, and there's a little bit of license taken, I think, with what the site plan is there.
Okay.
Nearer the actual building is more what will actually be developed.
You are aware of the existence of the bridge, and the city's aware and seems to have a plan, so if that addresses my, I won't say it addresses my concerns, but at least I understand the situation. Thank you.
I'd just like to say one thing, too. I think that comment is interesting. I was interested to hear your concern about the Boneyard. I think it's the most unloved creek in the world. People tend to want to fill it in, build over it, totally ignore it, and it's anything but, I mean, it's being treated as anything but a natural creek that actually could be beautiful to look at. It's always got shored-up walls, or, I mean, you know, it's a natural creek and a natural earth, and it's, almost no project in town has ever given it, you know, any kind of due. And I just find it so interesting that now we're gonna have a, we're gonna be vacating this street, but now the abandoned bridge will soon become part of a parking, parking lot. So I'd just like one more, not that necessarily in this location it makes a difference anymore, but I wish the city had some idea of how to make a creek look pretty.
Ms. Wyler?
So I had one question for Mr. Harrington, just if you could answer the questions I posed earlier before you came up regarding just information about Bear Properties LLC. And then I have some financial questions, I suppose, for Mr. Walden, whoever could answer those. But if you wanna answer?
Respect to the ownership of Bear Properties?
Yeah, what are your plans? What are your intentions? That sort of thing. And who are you?
The ownership is, it's a sole member LLC, and I'm the sole owner of it.
Okay.
So that's...
And what sort of projects do you anticipate? What size offices? What types of offices? Do you...
It is purely speculative at this point. And, you know, I think it will be a combination of things, probably between, you know, two and maybe as many as four uses. But there'd be a combination of retail, service, and office. It probably will not be all retail, because I'm not sure that demand's completely there. But we do believe there's demand for particularly service, and that would be, if there's a dry cleaner next door, but that type of use, perhaps a stockbroker, restaurant.
And do you, I'm not familiar with your LLC. Do you, have you had other ventures?
Virtually none within that LLC, but it was formed really for the acquisition of this property, so...
And what other projects have you had, I guess, outside the LLC, then?
Pardon me?
What other projects have you had or worked on?
Oh, a number of, you know, over the years in Champaign-Urbana.
Mm-hmm.
You have a number of retail and office. We manage quite a bit of property in Champaign-Urbana.
Mm-hmm.
It had been in the development, gosh, I don't know. Just trying to think of some of them. We developed the Eagle Stores in town.
Do you anticipate this, or when you were, developed the LLC to acquire this property, do you see it as being similar to any other properties that you've developed? I mean, you've...
Pardon me?
Do you see it as being similar to any other properties?
We've developed a number of small strip centers and service-type of facilities in the community, so it would be similar to that.
Okay.
The property was, to give you a little bit of background, the property really is, was purchased by Gill and added to that property. It was really a separate property for a long time, but they had largely demolished it on the interior. They'd taken all of the utilities out of it, all the drywall. It's basically not functional. The best thing would have been maybe to remodel what was there, but that's really not possible. So once their expansion plans didn't occur, it's really kind of an excess property. So it became what was the best thing to do with it, which is really why it's speculative, and what's the best thing for that property that can be done with it, because it can't be used the way that it is. So that's really why we're here.
Okay. Appreciate that information. And the next question, I don't know if Mr. Ruggets or Mr. Walden can answer. It's regarding the fiscal impact on the summary, which is listed on page two of the memorandum we received in our January, in our packet dated January sixth. It talks about the cost to the cities that being seventy-five hundred dollars for ten years provided by the TIF funds. And so as I understand that, that would be about, with the city getting sixteen percent of the property taxes and the equalized assessed valuation, the increase being, what, from fifty-nine, six-seventy to one forty-three hundred? That'd be about one thousand nine hundred thirty dollars per year? That we would get in increased property taxes, if I understand?
EAV increases to approximately two hundred thousand dollars, since you have the minimum investment of six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so you subtract the approximately sixty thousand dollars from that for an increase of a hundred and forty thousand.
I see. Okay. And my understanding then is, we have, what, about two thousand dollars a year increase in taxes that the city will get? That is the sixteen percent of the property tax pie. But we're, and I understand that would go on year after year after year, but we're anticipating giving out about seventy-five hundred dollars for each of ten years.
Look, can I handle that one? I think the one thing you have to keep in mind here is we do have the TIF district in place, so we're not dealing, so we're dealing with the entire amount of taxes that can be generated based upon all of the overlapping rates. So the seventy-five hundred interest subsidy represents only a portion of the total taxes raised, so the assistance to the developer comes from the new taxes paid. But the new taxes paid are based upon roughly eight dollars per one hundred and not our dollar thirty-one. So keep in mind that the increment is the entire tax rate that goes into the fund. So the, where you're looking, outside of TIF district, you're probably looking at fifteen percent of the taxes going to the city. In this particular case, it's the TIF district itself that will collect the entire amount and also rebate an amount in the form of an eligible activity to the developer. So that's where the confusion is on the fifteen percent, probably.
Okay.
Ms. Sathwaite?
Yeah, and then, so the seventy-five hundred represents about sixty-five percent of the taxes generated.
Correct.
Sixty-five percent of the increase in taxes that stays in the TIF district.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Pat?
I'm trying to get these numbers right. So it's about, so the increment would be about, in terms of the tax revenue, be around twelve thousand dollars? Is that about?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. Okay. And so, and so twelve... place, so we're not dealing, so we're dealing with the entire amount of taxes that can be generated based upon all of the overlapping rates. So the $7,500 interest subsidy represents only a portion of the total taxes raised, so the assistance to the developer comes from the new taxes paid, but the new taxes paid are based upon roughly $8 per 100 and not our $1.31. So keep in mind that the increment is the entire tax rate that goes into the fund. So the, where you're looking outside of TIF district, you're probably looking at 15% of the taxes going to the city. In this particular case, it's the TIF district itself that will collect the entire amount and also rebate an amount in the form of an eligible activity to the developer. So that's where the confusion is on the 15%, probably.
Okay.
Yes, that way.
Yeah, and then, so the $7,500 represents about 65% of the taxes generated.
Correct.
65% of the increase in taxes that stays in the TIF district.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Pat?
I'm trying to get these numbers right. So it's about, so the increment would be about, in terms of the tax revenue, around $12,000? Is that about?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, okay. And so, and so 12 would come in, 7,500 would go out.
Correct.
And we'd have a difference.
The district would retain the remainder.
And the, and the $45,000, you say the value, that's the value of the vacation of courtesy based on the way we figured that before? And so that's not, that's not a cost, but that's revenue we're foregoing.
If we could find a buyer, that would be revenue that we would forego.
But that's part of the, part of the deal is that we...
Right.
A value of 4,500 that we're putting, 45,000...
I think that's a fair value for it.
Or you could maintain it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? If not, a motion will be endorsed.
Will we send this counsel with a recommendation for approval?
The move by Mr. Wellen, may I get a second?
Second.
The move by Mr. Wellen, second, and by Mr. Alex. This one must be sent to counsel with a recommendation for approval. Any questions? Without...
Just had a comment to make. When I first looked at this development plan, I had a couple of the same concerns that Ms. Chenoweth had, whether or not the density was too low for the type of development that we were trying to get to happen on Broadway in the context of the downtown master plan, and also about this scattered parking. And I have eventually come to the conclusion that it's pretty good on both counts. I think the fact that this one-story building is going directly along the street, given all the challenges involved in this parcel with the boneyard and this existing property and the railroad tracks to the south, you know, I think we'd all like to see a, you know, a one-main type building on every one of these parcels downtown, but I think this is a parcel that has some pretty specific challenges that make that not physically feasible, even if it were economically feasible. I think that a solution which involves putting a lower-density, smaller building with more pedestrian scale along Broadway and then actually locating parking not only for that structure, but also for longer-term users of the Gil Sports Building or whatever ends up happening to that building, moving that parking back behind the building and away from the street is actually a more, more in keeping with the downtown plan than ending up with something along the lines of the County Market property where we have a larger building, but it's set back and separated from the street with a sea of parking. I also like the way in which in the site plan, the parking was broken up into these pods, which I think both brings parking for the retail and office uses closer to those sites and then also provides some additional parking for what is going to go into ultimately into the Gil Sports Site, which is more likely to be more of a warehouse-type use perhaps if it's redeveloped in the existing building or, you know, light manufacturing or office use. And I think the way that they proposed to lay out the parking is actually better than, you know, having one large parking lot and certainly to my mind, having walked around this building from time to time, better than what's there now, which is this variety of concrete and asphalt and sort of different pavement types and heights. And I think what's there now is, quite frankly, kind of an eyesore, and I think, you know, the plan, if the developer follows through with developing the site in a manner consistent with the site plan, I think it'll be a considerable asset over what's there now and hopefully be something that'll help the developer attract tenants or attract revenue to do some more with the existing Gil property. So I initially shared some of those concerns, but I think in the end, I feel this is a pretty good plan. Ms. Chenoweth?
Just a comment. I agree with Mr. Alex that I think it's a weird property and it's hard to develop, and that's one of the constraints with this. I also think it's important that we, in some ways, we test the market in this area. We see what, whether or not this become, this and other related things on Broadway become an engine for other kinds of things. It is, it's a significant subsidy. It's $120,000 over 10 years, which helps for a $600,000 building. Of course, that money, because it's over 10 years, really comes through the building itself, so it's not, you know, it's not out of the general fund, so to speak. I think it's a, it's a way to test to see, you know, we have this dance that we have to do between what we want and what the market will provide, and it's in that dance that we kind of figure out what we're capable of doing on Broadway Avenue. So certainly hope that this development is a success and proves the success of North Broadway. North Broadway is an opportunity waiting to happen. I mean, there's so much available space in that area. I really think that as we, as we look at, as we see how the market responds to projects like this, we may, very, hopefully, we will see that people want to do larger projects, that they want to take advantage of the available properties in this area and that we can begin to see North Broadway grow.
Ms. Vervin?
Certainly, I agree with the opportunity that presents itself. I would like to caution, just so everyone understands, because I, you know, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, the rear part of that property is a warehouse building and will be for a number of years. So what's developed up in the front will be, will be pretty nice and will need to be to be marketed, and I think will meet your expectations, but I don't want you to think that all of the parking pods and that will be developed behind that until, you know, sometime well into the future, just so that we understand that you won't be displaying with uneven pavement and what will be a warehouse environment behind that as you walk by it in two or three years, so...
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think this is a terrific redevelopment, and one of the purposes of the TIF is for reutilizing existing spaces that are no longer functional. And with the dilapidated building there, there are additional costs to redeveloping this site with demolition. Obviously, there's going to be a variety of expenses to do the parking plan and the landscaping plan along the boneyard. So this is exactly what the TIF district was meant for, is to offset some of those extraordinary costs of redeveloping a site that's within the downtown and that has already got some dilapidated development on it. And so this is pretty much comparable with the kinds of TIF incentives that we give to other properties. Some others, other developments have been in excess of 65% of the TIF increment for, like the Hampton Inn up on University Avenue. I think we went as high as 80 or 85% of the TIF increment going to the developer for those extraordinary costs of redeveloping a site. So I think that this level, the 65%, is a good level, and I really salute the developer for taking a chance. And it's not, most of the time when a developer wants to do a project, particularly in the downtown, they've got a tenant for at least a portion of the building. And so this really is the developer taking a chance and having the entire building be a speculative venture and just hoping that the style of development, the proximity to downtown, to the hospitals, to Crystal Lake Park and other downtown amenities is going to provide a market to filling up these spaces. So I'm really excited about doing it. It does fit in with our downtown plan of having the building up on front and the parking in the back, so I think this is, will be a terrific addition to that particular site and look forward to having it come out of the ground and hope it fills up quickly.
No other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All? Here and then, yes.
Thank you very much for making a few minutes on the agenda tonight, so we could present to you an update of where we're at with the draft of the comprehensive plan. You should have received a hard copy of the draft a number of weeks ago, and it is a lengthy document, so with a lot of maps and a lot of things to look through, so hopefully you've had a chance to get your feet wet with it at this time, and there's still some time before it comes to you, of course, for final adoption, but we wanted to take an opportunity to kind of go over the nuts and bolts of the plan and answer any preliminary questions you might have. I don't know, Libby, can you flip a couple lights here? Dark enough? You have a handout of this slideshow, so if you'd rather watch, you know, the screen or watch your handout, it's fine. As you know, this has been a project that we've been working on for a number of years now, about three to four years. It's been a completely in-house project. We haven't hired any consultants or spent any money on any outside professional help to help us along with it, but back in January of 2001, we, the mayor appointed a steering committee to head up this effort, and the committee has been chaired by Anna Merritt, who's here in the audience tonight, but said she would decline to speak, but that's okay. Anna has really been extremely dedicated to this process and has been an excellent chair for our steering committee and has done an exceptional job of everything from facilitating our public meetings to running our steering committee meetings to editing our draft that's out there now. And we joke in-house about how we couldn't possibly begin to afford her editing skills if she wasn't doing it for us. So our steering committee was appointed in January of '01. In summer of 2001, we completed an existing conditions report, you'll recall. In the fall of '01, we had our first set of neighborhood visioning workshops. This is where we went out to the eight different neighborhoods, and we had about a total of 350 or 400 people participate in each of those. The spring of '02, we had the University of Illinois Urban Planning Class do a door-to-door survey of 360 resident households in Urbana, and that kind of followed up on the workshops. In the summer of '02, we had a series of focus groups to get that technical and professional input on different issues ranging from infrastructure to housing, et cetera. In 2003, we completed an Issues and Trends Report and MAP. This was a report that said what are the current development trends that are happening in Urbana and what are some of the issues that are created from those trends? And that's a chapter by itself in the comprehensive plan now. In the summer of '03, we completed the draft Future Land Use Maps, and this is where we put the land use, future land use designations out in draft form and brought the maps out to the neighborhoods, which we did in the fall of '03, where it says neighborhood open houses, and we went back out to all those same neighborhoods that we did in the fall of 2001. In the summer of '04, we completed the draft set of the goals and objectives. In the fall of this last year, we put together our draft implementation program, and now we have a draft plan, full draft plan, ready for adoption this spring after another public input session coming up next month, and we'll talk about that in a bit. We use a term in the comprehensive plan called a system of plans. The comprehensive plan, as you know, is really an umbrella document to other planning efforts in the city and outside the city. This plan will coordinate our neighborhood plans, which are obviously focused on a specific neighborhood in the city, strategic plans, which could include plans such as our TIF district plans or, you know, any corridor study plan, et cetera. And then there's also agency plans, those plans that are not created by the city of Urbana per se, but we may have had a lot of involvement in their production, and they obviously need to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. Examples of that are the Greenways and Trails Plan or maybe an MTD Long Range Plan, et cetera. The trends and issues, again, as I mentioned, we looked at what are some of the current planning and development trends and then what are the issues that are created by those trends? And in the draft document, there's a rough, a purposefully rough map like this, we kind of call it a fuzzy bubble map, where it'll give general ideas such as, you know, a trend or of a loss of vitality in a downtown area or preserve character or make some kind of statements to that effect or redevelop this area, et cetera. So there's a larger-scale map in the plan that goes through, you know, majority of the city and looks at different trends and issues, and that's followed up with the report as well. The draft document also creates a vision, and of course, it's common for these plans to have a vision statement. This is a statement of desired outcomes or an image. It may not be what we have today, but it's partly that and partly what we vision for the future. We chose, the steering committee chose a vision statement that suggests who we are, what we value, where we want to go, and how will we get there? And the vision statement, although it's long, it's not really intended to be, you know, a slogan to put on a T-shirt, but the vision statement is, "Urbana is a diverse, progressive community comprised of a mosaic of unique neighborhoods benefiting from exceptional housing opportunities, schools, parks, and businesses, and from being the county seat of Champaign County. Urbana's values are personified by its cultural diversity, small-town feel, tree-lined streets, historic downtown, civic amenities, and its role as the home of the University of Illinois. Urbana will promote healthy, balanced growth while preserving its community heritage. Appropriately designed infill development will be encouraged to help revitalize the built urban environment while new growth areas will be developed in a contiguous, compact, and sustainable manner." From that vision statement, the plan outlines a series of goals and objectives, and we have categorized them into these four cornerstone components. And what we did was, when we first started on our goals and objectives, we, you know, we separated them out by topics such as economic development or roads or transportation and housing, whatever, and the steering committee struggled with that, said, well, you know, what's the order? What's the priority? Which one should go first? And they just didn't seem to have a real good feel to them. So we rearranged them into these cornerstone components. Quality of Life is, of course, the elements that make Urbana a unique and desirable community. They include mostly the goals and objectives that deal with neighborhood preservation and community character. Growth and Sustainability is the section where you'll find most of the goals and objectives for economic development and smart growth. Services and Infrastructure is a section that includes most of the goals and objectives for our public services such as police and fire and also some of our other city services such as community development block grants, housing programs, et cetera. Mobility addresses the section primarily for transportation, so... The plan also, of course, includes a very strong emphasis on the mapping and where we want growth where and where we want areas to grow and how. Part of that effort is to identify future land use designations. So our current plan, as you know, includes future land use designations of residential, commercial, industrial, and then we have a map that shows different colored blocks of where we want that. What's lacking from our current plan is any kind of vision or illustration of what we mean, what kind of development pattern we mean when we identify a category. Our current plan will say commercial, but what do we really mean when we say commercial? How would it look when it's built? So our new plan would include these different illustrations that would show how, you know, what residential urban pattern would mean or what commercial, what regional business would mean, et cetera. We have developed, I think, about 14 or 15 future land use designations. Some of them are typical that you've seen before, such as parks and recreation or heavy industrial, institutional, but we did a couple of unique ones that are new to our plan. Of course, there's a distinction between regional business and community business, and we'll talk more about that in a minute, but really, as you know, we have struggled recently with the one-size-fit-all for commercial development, and a 200,000-square-foot general-purpose retail store is very different than a mom-and-pop shoe store, so they need to be planned for differently, of course. Couple other unique categories on there, you'll see residential twice, one for urban pattern, one for suburban pattern. I think this plan does a better job at identifying where our urban pattern neighborhoods are and ensuring that we get that similar type of development in there rather than having suburban patterns in urban areas. Campus mixed use is also another unique category for this plan where we envision more of the type of Gregory Place developments and the one-main, as we talked about earlier tonight, and plan for those appropriately as well. Couple other things to note, on the bottom, we have an area called Future Planning Area. When you look through the plan, you'll see the outskirts of the Mile and a Half, which gets all the way out to past Cottonwood Road, et cetera, is, well, parts of those areas are still labeled just agricultural. Closer into town, we have areas called Future Planning Area. We felt it was really premature to, at this point, just go out and blanket the whole Mile and a Half with a category of residential or something that, you know, we really, it's difficult to plan for today out of, say, Cottonwood Road, but nevertheless, we don't want the plan to be totally silent on those areas either, so with regular updates to the plan, we would envision that we will assess whether or not we are hitting this future planning area and what kind of actions do we need to plan accordingly. This is just another example of one of the graphics you'll see in the plan. This is the illustration for mixed residential suburban. The idea here is our plan identifies areas primarily along... The idea here is our plan identifies areas primarily along, say, High Cross Road or Windsor Road, where we would like to see master plan developments that would include a mix of uses, including commercial uses at the, at an intersection probably, transitioning down to some more dense housing, maybe townhomes or apartments, et cetera, and then transitioning to single-family that would all be centered around some common open space. We have the opportunity on, say, High Cross Road and Windsor Road to do this kind of planning because there are still large acre tracts that, you know, will be up for consideration in the next five to 10 years. And hopefully, this plan will set, you know, a good vision for how we'd want to see these master plans. So, next was the task of putting all these designations on a map, of course. And as I mentioned, our current plan now, our 1982 plan, has a Future Land Use Map that shows the square-colored blocks all over, and then, you know, when there's a zoning proposal, we have to get it out and look very closely and try and determine what side of the street was that line on, and what did we intend to happen here and there. Well, we followed that same pattern when we first put the map together, and we had a map of the city in the Mile and a Half, and it had the colored blocks, if you will. And our steering committee really struggled with it and said, "You know, it looks very pretty, but we have a hard time understanding why you chose commercial here or residential here. It doesn't really, doesn't really give a lot of information other than, you know, different colors and different areas." So what we did is we took the entire city and the planning area, and we broke it into 14 smaller areas, and we created maps for each of those areas and got in a little more detail. The way we did that, and this is zoomed in on one particular map, the way we did that is we laid out an aerial and then did some graphics on top of that to show the colors, you know, which show where we'd like to see residential, and where we'd like to see, in this case, light industrial office or heavy industrial. But by doing this, we were able to annotate these maps and show a lot more detail on them to help get the point across of why we want an area to develop, or what other things should happen there in the future. In this case, there's a bunch of different items. You'll see future extension of Lincoln Avenue, which is already planned for at a route similar to that. In this area, and this is, again, far north Urbana, up near Olympian Drive, you'll, there's annotation for promoting a trail along the Saline Branch, and, you know, ideas for how to buffer that trail, where to expand industrial, et cetera. So there's really, you know, a little more information here, which should be useful and help our decisions when we have development proposals and when we're making future land use policies. The other neat thing about these maps is we should be able to, as we get new aerials every few years, be able to insert the new aerials and see how things have changed. We expect that to be a tool in helping us monitor the plan and monitor, you know, what we envisioned in the plan. Okay, beyond the mapping, the plan does contain an implementation program, and this simply is really a work plan for how to implement the Comprehensive Plan as a whole and how to achieve the goals and objectives. And really, it identifies different types of strategies that should be undertaken. Some of these are policies where they will be used simply by our plan commission and by yourself and staff to determine if, you know, which direction we want to go with something. Some strategies in the implementation program will be specific action items, adopt this program, or something very specific. Others will be a special study, you know, develop a neighborhood plan for the historic East Urbana neighborhood is an example. Others will just be an issue of coordination. For example, coordinate regularly with the MTD on site planning to ensure, you know, appropriate transit facilities, et cetera. Kind of small to read, but this is just, you know, one example of part of the implementation program. Again, here, the strategy is, "Develop a strategic plan for the north, for the Lincoln Avenue corridor north of I-74 in order to promote that area as a prime industrial corridor for new development. Study feasibility of a tax increment financing district for that area." This is the type of strategy, of course, this is both a special study and an action item. The chart identifies where the related goal or objective or map is for that strategy, and also identifies a sequence of when this should happen. And then finally, identifies who's going to be responsible for doing this and what other participants would be involved in this process. This last column, we have worked at quite a bit, and I think we're still working at a little bit. We don't want to make it look like this is strictly, you know, an incredibly long laundry list of things for community development to do, because actually, these things will happen with other departments and other agencies and nonprofits and citizens, et The plan also does include a transportation map. In this case, it's really the roadway map, which identifies functional classification of roads, and then also future roadway improvements and other future transportation improvements. This is really a legal, a necessary legal part of our plan that we need when we meet with developers or consider development proposals. We need to be able to say, "Our plan identified that a road needs to be built here." We use that to mandate the dedication of right-of-way, et cetera. And it's also a major part of our funding through COATs for transportation improvements. I should add here, it was, our original goal is not to have a comprehensive land use plan and then a supporting roadway map. We really want to have a transportation map that shows not just where we want new roads to be, but where we need new transit facilities, where we need to think about transit, pedestrian accommodations, et cetera. Our first shout-out-of-the-box, we tried to put all that on this map, and it was virtually impossible. So we've gone back, and the annotated maps, the 14 maps that we looked at that get into more detail, offer us the best opportunity to go ahead and add, you know, specific provisions for where we want to focus on transit in certain areas, et cetera. The MTD is one of the 40, 35 agencies that we sent copies of the plan to, to get their technical comments, and we're receiving those, and I met with them recently. Okay, I think there's a number of differences between this draft plan and our current 1982 plan. And I've talked about most of those, but really, the Issues and Trends is something new. Our '82 plan didn't do that, at least it didn't document it. It may have been done during the planning process, I would hope, but it didn't document it in the plan and didn't, you know, it wasn't there to really offer that, to round it out and offer that kind of background. The annotated Future Land Use Maps is really different, as I've already described, as well as the illustrated Future Land Use Concepts. We haven't seen that in any of our planning efforts recently, and it certainly isn't in our current Comprehensive Plans. Again, I mentioned this before, but our plan really calls for distinctions among commercial categories, and also as a follow-up implementation item, we need to revisit our zoning ordinance to determine what changes are needed to ensure that, you know, the kind of commercial that we want in certain places is how it's actually zoned. In general, the plan identifies regional business, community business, and then, to a smaller degree, neighborhood business. I think, you know, the differences between regional business and community are pretty self-explanatory, but ones that draw from the region and one that, you know, draw from the community. We did not get into a lot of detail on the neighborhood business concept, and, you know, a very, very small store just attracting from the immediate neighborhood. The implementation program also is different from our 1982 plan. The '82 plan was really more of a policy document, which has served us very well, but it didn't really offer any kind of specifics on what should be done to help achieve the goals and objectives of that plan, and this plan will strive to do that. And then finally, we want to build in a system for regular updates and review. This, it isn't, it is not the intent to finish this plan and say, "Okay, this is a 20-year document, let's, you know, just see how well it holds up over 20 years," which is, in some respects, what we've done, although we did have a major revision to our '82 plan in 1993, but we would like to build in a system of revisiting our plan every two years and monitoring how it's doing, not redoing the plan, of course, but taking a look at it, see how we're doing, and see what areas may need to be revisited or refocused as conditions change in the community. It's not the intent to have a plan that just reacts and try and predicts what happens out there, but rather try and guide development. The longer we go without updating our plan and without revisiting it, the more stale it gets, and the less likely that our plan commission and you are going to use it in your decision-making process. And I think we've seen that on a couple examples over the last couple of years. In fact, there are areas that are in our Mile and a Half that are not currently planned for in any way, because as our boundaries have grown, so has our Mile and a Half, and our comprehensive planning hasn't stayed current to plan for that. Special areas of interest, of course, you know, much of the plan is very agreeable to everybody, especially a lot of the goals, but there are some areas that have been hot spots, if you will, over the past few years, and our steering committee has worked very hard on those, and we've had a lot of discussions with residents and steering committee members and council members over some of these hot spots. We are going to highlight these in the last Neighborhood Open House and have people focus on these rather than try and, you know, display 110 pages on the walls and have people come out and look at them. I think these are the areas people want to look at most, and it's the areas we want people to understand how we address them in the plan. First one is the High Cross Road, University Avenue interchange area. Of course, we've had a lot of comment from folks in northeast, unincorporated Northeast Urbana about the future of High Cross Road and the desires to limit development in that area. Our plan will identify, as our current Comprehensive Plan does, the completion of the Trumpet Interchange, or the completion of the University Avenue interchange, I guess, however you want to refer to it. The plan is clear that it is for the sole purpose of serving High Cross Road south of Interstate 74, and so we can continue to promote that area and have good access to it. We do, for the High Cross Road area north of the interstate, identify a future land use of rural residential, which is intended to be very limited residential development in a clustering fashion that helps preserve natural amenities and, you know, create some open space. The reality in that area is, it is not likely to be annexed into the city anytime soon, and the county has some pretty stringent zoning regulations for residential development, and they're looking at making them even more stringent in the coming year, so. But nevertheless, it is in our planning area, so we do identify a future land use for it. Second point, the Lincoln-Bucey corridor in the West Urbana neighborhood has been discussed many times at the steering committee meeting and other meetings, and the plan addresses that area. In many respects, it stays similar to our current downtown-to-campus plan, future land use designations. There are some areas along Lincoln Avenue where that new campus mixed-use concept is proposed, I should say, appropriate areas. And I think we've had some pretty good consensus with the West Urbana Neighborhood Association and others on the outcome of those maps. I should add, part of the Lincoln and Bucey corridor from Illinois Street south down to, I think, Ohio, we are actually not identifying on this plan with a specific land use, a new land use. We're saying use the existing downtown-to-campus plan, but we do identify that this could be an area that should be looked at in further detail on a parcel-by-parcel level to determine where appropriate reuse or redevelopment can happen. We started to get into that with the steering committee, and it just, it just got too tedious in the concept, in the context of an overall Comprehensive Plan, to get down to, you know, 803 versus 805, and it didn't work. So we called it out as kind of a special study area for a future date. The third point, the Historic East Urbana neighborhood, this, the plan identifies the city to look at current zoning in this area and to identify a neighborhood plan. And as you know, the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association has picked up steam in a grassroots fashion over the last few years, and we've been talking with them about a planning effort that would, that would identify that neighborhood a little better. And then the last two points, the Philo Road Business District, or Sunny Crest area, has been of particular interest, and this is kind of, you know, we're ahead of ourselves a little bit by, you know, we don't have the plan finished yet, but we did do the report on the Philo Road Business District and the strategies that are there for that. And then finally, the South Farms, the University of Illinois South Farms expansion, and then the Curtis, plans for Curtis Road, and the plan addresses that, and that's been a lot of discussion at our steering committee as well. Those are kind of the hot spots of the plan. The next steps, of course, January 27th of this month, our steering committee will meet again and continue their review of the draft plan. January 31st is when we've asked our agencies to submit any comments that they may have. We gave them hard copies of the plan, asked them to mark it up, give it back to us, and we'd be happy to meet and do presentations for them. We've been doing that. We did one for the Chamber today, and we'll have more for Rotary, et cetera. So if there's anyone out there that you know would like to see this, let us know. February 8th, we are planning our final piece of the public input that, effort that we've made on this plan. We are organizing a public open house to review the draft plan. This will be February 8th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Civic Center. We'll have the entire Civic Center, and as I said, we're going to highlight these hot spots, if you will, but also have the entire plan available to review. We have not yet started to advertise for this event, but we will in the next week in the form of the mailing card that'll go out to every postal address in the 61801 and 61802 area. And this is similar to the advertising that we did for the last two major neighborhood workshops, so we expect to have some pretty good participation. And this will be a little different than the typical open house. We will do a short presentation in the beginning. A lot of people want that when they come to an open house, and there's just, you know, 58 boards to go around and read. It gets a little mind-boggling. So we will do a short presentation in the front, and then let people explore the areas of the plan that they want to see. So again, Urbana residents will be getting a card in the mail, but again, the date on that will be February 8th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Urbana Civic Center. Following up after that, our steering committee will meet, hopefully, for a final time on February 17th to review the draft and to talk about some of the input that happened at the, at the public open house, determine what changes may need to be made to the plan in light of those as well. We are hoping to schedule a public hearing with the plan commission on March 10th. This would officially start the public input process and the adoption consideration of this plan, and then we'd hope to bring it to you by March 28th, or maybe the meeting after that. It's our goal to have this council adopt this plan. It's been a major project that, you know, you've worked on individually in many different ways over the past four years, and it's very important to us that you have a chance to review it and adopt it, as it's really all snapped together now and ready for final For folks at home, there are different ways you can review the draft plan right now. Obviously, it's a long, it's a long plan with every other page is in color, so, you know, producing hard copies and dropping them from airplanes is kind of, you know, cost prohibitive, but the full draft is available on the city's website at www.city.urbana-il.us. That's in PDF format. You can look at the plan there. There is a hard copy at the Urbana Free Library, and then there's one at the City Building. If you would like a disc of the PDF files, we'd be happy to provide that for you. You can just call me at the City Building, or call anybody at the Planning Division at the City of Urbana, and we'd be happy to do that. Take any questions or comments that you have at this point.
Just two quick comments. One is a pretty big meeting, keeping the, what's the company, High Cross Road, well, residential, I think that's something that a lot, I know a lot of people talk about with me, and in fact, where we, I think, know a lot of people about that concern as it was, the Comprehensive Plan, and then also certainly your attention to Main Street.
West Main Street Historic District, or Historic, though not designated Historic District, the historic nature of that neighborhood and keeping it the residential nature that it should be. And I appreciate those changes that actually make Page 76 not quite, I think, the status that it currently is under, under the plans, and I've been emailing and talking with several of my neighbors about it, and the updated plans, I think, that is, the changes to Page 76 that I'm not sure if other people have yet, I think are being met with a lot of pleasure and a lot of support. So I want to just express my appreciation for all that you and Dr. Tyler and your staff have done. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you for your presentation. And I thank the council members for showing up.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Rob, and I know Anna's put a lot of time and effort into this, and I didn't realize until I saw it on the graphic there. It started four years ago, so, yeah, this has been a marathon of planning efforts, and so I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done, Rob, and Anna, and the steering committee. You've, you know, really gone through this step by step, and it looks like it's going to end up being a marvelous product once you get done, so we really appreciate the...